Thank you. And good evening and welcome to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing here at Hillsborough County. And we have a hybrid meeting tonight. Most people are here, but we have a hybrid meeting, and so we'll do a roll call if the clerk would do a roll call, please.
Good evening, Kemp.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Overman.
Here.
Thank you, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. We will consider the transmittal of all three comprehensive plan amendments to the state land planning agency and other agencies for review. If these amendments are approved for transmittal, a second public hearing and final vote will be held before the amendments are adopted. We have three tonight. The board will also consider the final adoption of one comprehensive plan amendment. And I'll now request that the planning commission staff introduce the first item on this evening's agenda. But before you do that, let me just recognize Earth Day. I don't know if this was planned on purpose to do all this environmental overview or care for Earth Day, but happy Earth Day, everyone. And we'll let you start.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Tony Garcia, Planning Commission Staff, the first item on our agenda this evening is 2008. It will be co-presented by Mr. Shawn College and Mr. Diego Guerra.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioners, hopefully everyone can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Thank you. This is Shawn College. I'm the Director of Strategic Planning, Environmental and Research with the Planning Commission. And joining me is my colleague at the Planning Commission, Diego Guerra, who did a lot of most of the heavy lifting on this element. And this is very apropos for Earth Day. This first item on your agenda tonight is HCCPA 2008. It is the Environment on Sustainability section of the Comp Plan for Hillsborough County, formerly known as the Aquafor Conservation and Aquafor Recharge Elements. So let me share my screen with you, and I'll give you a brief presentation just to remind everybody from the workshop what we've done. Hopefully, we can see my screen now. And the background on this item is the second portion of the overall Hillsborough County Plan update, so we're very excited about that. It builds on the success of One Water, which was the first adopted update of the Comprehensive Plan. This is the second portion, again, environmental sustainability. The current Conservation Aquafor Recharge Element we have addresses natural resources, the Hillsborough River master plan, all water resources. It actually has minimal language on wildlife quarters, and that's one of the shortcomings that we were trying to address in this update. We developed this collaboratively with county staff and the Environmental Protection Commission. We incorporated feedback from the public stakeholders, local and regional agencies. Again, we built on this success of One Water and kind of used the same type of public engagement that we were successful with with One Water. We incorporated direction from the Board of County Commissioners from their land use workshop in January of 2020 to help us develop this updated section. There was a focus on current policy direction and priorities for natural resource planning in Hillsborough County. We retained important components of the existing plan update and modernized these components. 14% of this new section is new policy language, approximately 86% of the language updates existing adopted goals, objectives and policies. Mostly through reduction of repetition, of repetitiveness, we were able to reduce the size of this element to make it more user-friendly for everyone, from 300-plus goals, objectives and policies now to around 191 goals, objectives and policies. And I would say that this does, it's not just duplication, we were successful in really updating the content of this section. Some of the improvements that I wanted to highlight were we increased, again, the language and the guidance and the support for wildlife quarters extensively in this. We worked with the ELAP program staff to help do that, so we think we have a great framework going forward for wildlife quarters. We also, there's been a long-held policy in the Comprehensive Plan on the potential for improvements in environmental buffers, right now building on the setback that we have now in the county code. So that policy was updated to make sure it still gives support for the potential for doing something in the future on buffers or setbacks. We also addressed trees and the urban canopy of trees. This is new policy direction in the Comprehensive Plan that supports this important part of our natural environment. And finally, one of the other things I'll highlight is equity. We address equity for natural resources in the plan amongst various groups and everyone in the county, and that was a new, a real improvement to this section. So we're real excited about that. And moving on, this is just to highlight, again, the organization of the element or the section itself. I won't go into detail, but we have sections on clean energy, on industrial waste, on preservation and conservation, dealing with the variety of natural resources we have in the county, similar to the existing element we have. We continue to address Cockroach Bay Aquatic Preserve, all the rivers, and then specifically the Hillsborough River, as is required by state law. And again, just to touch on stakeholder and engagement, it was very successful as we, as was One Water, as we followed that framework. We had formal announcements and a project website and virtual public outreach kickoff back in January and February. We developed reference documents to, and created greater transparency and led the public and stakeholders be able to really understand what we're doing with this element, this section. There was targeted engagements, we reached out to neighborhood associations, the agricultural community, the building community and environmental organizations. The final version really reflects this outreach and incorporates feedback from the stakeholders and the public. We had no objections from any reviewing agencies with regard to this proposed new section. We did have comments from Tampa Bay Estuary Program, Tampa Bay Water, Regional Planning Councils, and the Environmental Protection Commission, and we incorporated all and worked with them on all these suggestions and comments they had, and they were all incorporated into this section. This is consistent with the current policies of the Comprehensive Plan. And finally, the Planning Commission took this up at their public hearing, and they unanimously voted to recommend that the BSC find this consistent and transmit it to DEO with the intent for adoption. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we have nothing more, so we will open the public hearing. This is a public hearing, and we have three speakers signed up tonight. Jake Kramer is number one.
Thank you, Chairman Kemp. This is Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller. I wanted to call in tonight just to thank staff for working with us. I represented a number of agricultural landowners in talking through the language with staff. I think this is a good example, Commissioners, of how planning is supposed to work. They listen to us and work with us on some concerns that we had, and I think we've ended up with a great product. Similar to One Water, I think staff did a really good job of actually making our Comprehensive Plan readable. It reads, it does not read any longer like it was written by a consortium of lawyers. So I think that's a good thing, and it's meant as a compliment. So again, Commissioners, I would urge you to approve this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, Kenneth Parker.
Madam Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kenneth Parker. I am the Executive Director of the Florida Strawberry Growers Association, and I serve as Vice Chair of the Hillsborough County Agricultural Economic Development Council. The agricultural stakeholders want to publicly thank the Planning Commission and their staff, and I want to, Chairman Kemp, I want to point out specifically Shawn, Diego and Melissa, they really did a great job. And they reached out to us and met with us on numerous occasions, and we had productive conversations regarding the environmental and sustainability section of the Comp Plan text amendment. And it was similar. As Jake said, it worked the same way we did with One Water, and that's a great template to follow. But the staff listened to our concerns, and they were willing to make changes, that clarified language to avoid unintended consequences that I know each of you would like to do. I mean, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to do something that's going to unintentionally cause harm. So we appreciate the opportunity to participate and share in this input, you know, in this process, but again, I just want to say thanks, and we look forward to working with each of you on the Board of County Commissioners, as well as the Planning Commission, on future projects.
Thank you. Reed Fishbach.
Good evening, Commissioners. Reed Fishbach, and I also just want to take a moment to thank staff for taking the time to work with agricultural and rural landowners on this amendment. It is a lot of material, and they did a great job of helping guide us through what's currently in the code and how it was being amended, and then in clarifying some of the changes. So I just want to again say thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments, I believe. So with that, we'll turn to board discussion. At this time, I do not see Commissioner Smith. You're recognized.
Thank you. And I've talked to the Planning Commission staff about this. There is a lot of boldly aspirational vision in here. There is a lot of wiggle room in those bold visions and aspirations. So, you know, I appreciate all the work that went into collating and collecting these elements across from different places in the Comp Plan and collecting them all together and then streamlining them, and as Mr. Kramer said, making it readable, and that's very important. But from here, this is not the end. This is the beginning. The Comprehensive Plan is our basis for going out from here and putting teeth in our land development code, putting teeth in the, actually acting on the visions and goals that are expressed here. And there's a, it suggests a lot of action that we can take from here, and so I hope we do move from here and not just leave this on the shelf somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see no other comments at this time.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay. I heard a second by Commissioner Overman. Who moved approval?
No.
Commissioner, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Myers, sorry. Sorry. Okay, so it was a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Myers. And I'd just like to say that I'm pleased with this. I looked it over. I wish I could have spent a little more time. For myself, one of my areas that I am always most focused on is basically the energy efficiency and clean energy goals that are there, so they're in here. I do hope that in the future, we can really work on making them more robust and solid and expanding them. I see Objective 1.2, Support the Development, and Consider Use of Alternative Energy and Fuel. And I'd really like to make that something far more strong in supporting solar energy and how we move ahead here and do everything we can in Hillsborough County to be with renewable energy. It also says Support Domestic Production under that policy, Support Domestic Production of Environmentally Safe Energy Sources. And, you know, I'd like that to be solar here in Florida, where we have the sun at our fingertips and we can access it at a lower cost than importing $38 billion worth of fossil fuels from other states and countries. And so I'd really like to see this section kind of work on seeing what we can do to strengthen that in the future, to make, to focus more on renewable future in our Comprehensive Plan. But that being said, I will, we have our motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and seeing no further, I guess we're going to have to do a roll call vote. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And now, if we can move to the next item, I'll request that the Planning Commission go to HCCPA 21-03.
Ms. Melissa Dickens.
Good evening, Commissioners. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission Staff. I'm joined by my colleagues in the Environmental Management Division of Hillsborough County. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Are you all seeing PowerPoint?
Yes, we are.
Okay, great, thanks. Again, Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission Staff. This item is HCCPA 2103. This is a text amendment to the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and the amendment proposes to modify the Wellhead Resource Protection Areas map. Before we delve into the details of the amendment, I wanted to start out by outlining some of the context related to the Wellhead Resource Protection Areas. You all heard some of this last time during the workshop, we expanded some of this information. The, well, both the Wellhead Resource Protection Areas map and policy language are adopted within the One Water chapter. The language can be found under Objective 1.3 in One Water. And Wellhead Resource Protection Areas are part of a comprehensive potable water protection strategy in Hillsborough County. This protection strategy also includes potable water wellfield protection areas, which are the areas around the smaller wells, and surface water protection areas, which are designed to protect surface water supplies. And the Wellhead Resource Protection Areas are specifically designed to protect a specific type of well, the public potable water supply wells. These are larger wells that have a permitted quantity of at least 100,000 gallons per day and are connected to a public water system. And the intent of the Wellhead Resource Protection Areas is to protect the potable water that is being drawn up from these potable water supply wells and ensure that no contaminants or pollutants get into the drinking water. The primary way that the Wellhead Resource Protection Area is implemented in the regulatory framework is within the LDC. It is Section 3.05.00 of the LDC. And this section within the LDC regulates the Zone 1 and Zone 2 prohibitions and restrictions. Zone 2 has a greater number of prohibited and restricted activities, and Zone 2 is the subject of this evening's amendment. Some background on the amendment. The amendment was privately initiated. The amendment proposes to remove the public potable water supply well protection Zone 2 from the area surrounding the Crystal Lakes Manor wells in northwest Hillsborough County. The amendment also proposes to remove the Crystal Lakes Manor wells and the particle tracking from the map. I also wanted to note that the applicant provided a scientific memorandum outlining the hydrogeology of the area. This is new since the workshop, and that is included in your packet on page 70. This map shows the general location of the amendment within Hillsborough County. It's located in northwest Hillsborough County, right around the intersection of US 41 and Sunset Lane. And these two maps, these two zoomed-in maps show a zoomed-in picture of what the adopted map looks like, as well as what the proposed map would look like should this amendment be adopted. So starting with the adopted map, I wanted to walk through a couple of items. This green square here with the diagonal lines, this is the Zone 2 protection area surrounding the Crystal Lakes Manor well. The wells here are the black dots on the map, and then the particle tracking is this circular shape moving, or semicircular shape moving north of the amendment, or the amendment site. This, the proposed map, also, excuse me, on the adopted map, this larger area here with the red, that is the Zone 1 protection area, so I wanted to note that as well. And then on the proposed map, you can see that the wells, the particle tracking and the protection area, the Zone 2 protection area, are being removed by this amendment. The Zone 1 protection area in the red remains. And we did receive some updated information from our agency partners as part of the agency comment process, and I wanted to make sure and share that as part of the record to update and inform the record. The, our Comprehensive Plan directs our staff to coordinate with those agencies that have the technical expertise to evaluate plan amendments that are more technical in nature, and we did coordinate extensively with Hillsborough County, the Southwest Florida Water Management District, and Tampa Bay Water as part of the review of this amendment. Did want to note that all of the correspondence, the emails, other reference materials that I'm going to be talking about, those are all included within your packet, and those can be found starting on page 20. But one of the things to note is that the subdivision that was formerly served by the Crystal Lakes Manor wells, called Crystal Lakes Manor, that is now being served by Hillsborough County. They are a Hillsborough County Utilities customer. And the wells that you saw on the map, the black dots, those are no longer being used for potable water supply purposes. One of the wells was permanently plugged and abandoned by Tampa Bay Water back in 2015, and the other well was transferred to the Southwest Florida Water Management District. It's being used as a monitoring well for the minimum flows and levels programs, so they use that well to examine and evaluate the groundwater level. And SWFMD did confirm the integrity of the wells late last month. They also continue to regularly visit the site on a monthly basis and continue to regularly monitor and maintain this well. I know that there were some questions last time about this monitoring well, so I wanted to provide that information. Terms of impacts, the proposed amendment would remove the Zone 2 protection area and the associated restrictions and prohibitions. The Zone 1 protection area and restrictions and prohibitions would remain. There would be no change to the Zone 1 protection area. Also wanted to note that the protection areas that are in place to protect some of the smaller wells in the area with the 500-foot buffer as part of the potable water wellfield protection areas, those are not changing as part of this amendment. Those will remain in place, and those are implemented by the LDC and DEP Chapter 62-521. In terms of agency comments, again, we did coordinate extensively with those agencies responsible for water resources and received comments from Tampa Bay Water, the Southwest Florida Water Management District, Hillsborough County, EPC and Plant City, and no objections from these reviewing agencies were received. Tampa Bay Water and SWFMD provided some additional details on the Crystal Lakes Manor wells, some details about the abandonment process, and additional information about groundwater protections. Again, all that information is included in your packet. And staff examined a number of policies and objectives when looking at consistency related to this amendment. A few of these are up on your screen for your reference. The remainder are available in your packet. First, we evaluated One Water Objective 1.3, which states that the county should protect groundwater quality. We also evaluated One Water Policy 3.1.4, which speaks to the importance of updating information and using best available data. And One Water Objective 5.3 and ICE Objective 1.1, excuse me, ICE is Intergovernmental Coordination Element, Intergovernmental Coordination Element 1.1, those direct Planning Commission staff to coordinate with local, state and regional agency partners on water resources and best practices. And we, staff found, using this consistency review, we found that we were consistent with these policies in reviewing this amendment. In terms of next steps, should this board decide to transmit this amendment this evening, it will then go to the state and regional agencies for their review. That'll take place in the April through June timeframe, and then it'll come back to you all on June 17th as part of an adoption public hearing. And your Planning Commission found HCCPA 2103 consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the Future of Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and would recommend that you transmit this amendment this evening. This concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. We also have some of our colleagues from the Environmental Management Division, and I believe the applicant is also here. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, if the applicant, I know I have four representatives signed up, people signed up for public hearing, and I'm not sure how many are from the applicant, or if you want to speak now for three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. This is Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hill Ward Henderson. And I'd like to begin this evening by complimenting Ms. Dickens on not just her thorough presentation, but she really did a very diligent and detailed review of this particular amendment. And you heard, even after she heard the comments at the workshop, she really worked hard and really focused on the issues that were raised, and I really appreciate her efforts, and I think her presentation very thoroughly outlined all the facts. All of the reviewing agencies agree that these, the Crystal Lake wells are no longer part of the potable public water supply, and therefore it's appropriate to remove the depiction of the well on the map and the corresponding Zone 2 protection area. As you heard, your Comprehensive Plan requires you to use the most updated and recent technical data, and there is no longer any factual basis to continue to depict the Crystal Lake wells as a part of the public potable water supply. They simply are not, and therefore it is also appropriate to remove the Zone 2 protection area. And with that, I would respectfully request that you transmit this amendment this evening. Remain available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. So this is a public hearing, and we do, I see one of the names is repeated here twice. So I'll call first on Michael Alfieri.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Michael Alfieri. I am a licensed geologist in the state of Florida with 23 years' experience, well, a little bit greater than 23. I'm a karst hydrogeologist, and I am the, working with the applicant here. I provided the report that I believe was in your Commissioners' packages, and if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Michael Horner.
Michael Horner has not joined the meeting.
Yeah, ma'am, I am not on this amendment. Thank you.
Okay, your name is signed up for this, so with that, we'll, we have no one else signed up, so.
I apologize. I am on the CPA for Orient Road. My apologies.
Oh, you're going to be on the next one? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll try and figure that out here. Okay, so with that, we'll just close this public hearing, and I can't assume there's no applicant rebuttal at this time, and if we can move to board discussion.
Move approval.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and uh...
I have a question.
Okay. You're recognized, Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it. And I heard the motion, it sounds like this is moving in a direction of approval, but I do have a couple of questions about it, because I am a little concerned about the removal. Melissa, thank you very much for your report, and yes, it was very thorough. You did seem to ask everybody for an opinion on the result. But I did happen to notice in the responses back and forth from the multiple agencies that you enquired was that, you know, you were looking for opportunities to see who's monitoring and whether or not it's an issue because of the monitoring well next door, or the other monitoring well. And it did indicate that SWFMD was doing the other monitoring, but they were only monitoring for minimum flow level or levels rather than contamination levels. And they referred to, you know, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection as well as to the, our local EPC. But when I looked at the correspondence, I couldn't find that we asked that question. Is, yes, we know that... Is, yes, we know that everybody's looking at minimum flow or, or minimum level flow in order to really address, but since SWFMA does not monitor for contaminants specific to federal EPA drinking water standards, and yes, these wells are not being currently used for servicing water in the area, the entire area, when you look at the map, is, you know, is a Swiss cheese of lakes that connect to various different systems. And while it may not be public potable water service, there, I can't, can't imagine that there are not a significant number of wells in the area that are maybe beyond the 500 feet that are dependent on clean water. But I cannot find in the file where we asked the question is who's monitoring for contaminant and what reports indicate that the soils in the area are in fact safe for possible contamination of, of the secondary wells or wells in the area other than a very large public water supply. Sorry for the long question. I just, I just, I'm looking through to find all of your very wonderful detailed notes and response on the emails. That question I didn't see answered, and that's what I, why I'm asking.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. You're correct. We did not ask that specific question. And so that I understand, it sounds like you're asking, what is the process for monitoring the, the groundwater quality in the area? You know, SWFMA monitors the, the level, but what is the process for monitoring the quality in the area? For that question, that technical question, I would ask if either of my colleagues from Environmental Management might be able to weigh in and, and answer that.
Oh, yeah. Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Jeff Greenwell. I oversee the wellhead protection program for the county. Public water supply wells are required to do self-monitoring under the Clean Water Act or the Safe Drinking Water Act. So that monitoring would be performed through those entities. There's no known contamination sites that I'm aware of in this area. So as far as that's concerned, that, that would not be a concern at this time.
May I have a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. So based on no known, but I still don't know who's doing the monitoring, how, how can we assure that there's no potential contamination in the area if this wellhead protection is removed?
Well, this wellhead protection is specific to the withdrawal aspect of those wells. Those wells would be pulling contaminants towards them, and since they're not doing that anymore, one of them's completely abandoned, and the other one is a monitoring well only, that would not be a concern here.
Okay, so the monitoring well was also only being monitored for levels of water, but not for contamination. So is it the county that actually is monitoring the soils in the, in that area for potential contamination, or is that, or, because SWFMA specifically said they're not doing that?
Well... Go ahead.
There is the monitoring that individuals do for their drinking water wells, and if there's a community water system well, it'll be sampled, and those results are turned into the Department of Health. So there are a number of wells that are being monitored for contamination in the area, but it's not reported.
Okay, did, thank you. Very good. I appreciate that. That's very helpful. Did anybody ask the Department of Health to see if there had been any reports of contamination in the area? The reason I'm asking is because of the Swiss cheese of lakes all through that area. While the report came back from the consultant, it indicated that there was a good shelf of the blue clay that would hold in, all around this specific well. You know, it, it had the protections because that well found a good spot to go find water. So, so the area in general is an area that would appear to me, as a novice in this question, to be an area that should be protected. So I was curious if, if the area had had any reports from the Health Department or any records of reports that had been done in the area before we removed the protections for an area that clearly has a significant water supply available to the general area, even though we may not be using it currently for water supply. I guess it's probably the best way to stop that sentence. Anybody?
So, so one, one note, respectfully, Commissioner Overman, that I believe the Department of Health is on our agency comment list, so we do send them the, the amendments. Now, I don't believe that they responded to this particular one.
They've been a little busy lately, so.
Yeah. Yes, they've had a busy month. But, but we do notify them. And then also with respect to the protections, Zone, the Zone One Protection is still in place in this area, so that is a much larger, broader protection area, and that is not changing as, as part of the amendment.
Understood. And so the allowable uses between Zone One and Zone Two, however, are different, correct?
Yes, they are.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Right. And so, I mean, given the Swiss cheese that's up there, and that's why I call it that, it just literally looks, when you look at the pink area of the map that you showed, not necessarily where the actual potable water impact zones were done, because they were marked in solid colors, but everywhere else in the potable water impact zone is literally is a Swiss cheese of lakes all through that area. And, and I would assume those lakes are somewhat connected to each other, correct?
Certainly, surface water-wise, yes.
There's some karstic features, certainly.
Right.
Okay.
I, I think it's important to note that from the perspective of impacts associated with underground storage tanks and above-ground storage tanks, those are regulated through DEP under a separate rule. And, and those tanks all are required to have double containment or secondary containment, as well as the piping for all those tanks. So that potential for contamination to be discovered early would, is great at this point. Historically, it wasn't. They weren't required to have secondary containment of either the tank or the piping, the conveyance piping. Now they are required to have double containment, and they have to inspect that, what they call the interstitial zone, between the primary tank and that secondary containment on a, on a frequency, and they have to report all those findings. And they have a, the Department of Environmental Protection has a really robust compliance program surrounding those tanks, because it ended up costing the taxpayers a lot of money historically. So those tanks are all insured, they have to be inspected on a high frequency, they look at all those interstitial spaces for compliance, make sure there's no petroleum in those spaces, and they have to report all that. It's, the, the program's actually called STICOM, Storage Tank Compliance and Monitoring. And, and you can, anybody can go on and look at any tank in our county through their website, and you can see what kind of compliance is being performed and how frequently they're looked at. And I believe the program is delegated to the Environmental Protection Count, Commission inside of Hillsborough County.
Right, right. And I, I noticed that they did not have, the EPC locally did not have any comments on any of the items that they were asked on, and had two other outstanding unrelated to this one. So I, I appreciate that. I just, I just have real concerns about this location. And I appreciate the answers to your questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll recognize Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quick, I just want to point out that the Planning Commission unanimously agreed that this text amendment was consistent, and its reasoning was based on the fact that the potable water wells are no longer being used, and that the comp plan indicates that criteria, planning approaches, standards, and regulatory frameworks should be regularly reviewed and updated to reflect new information and best practices. The comp plan also calls for close intergovernmental coordination. So EPC, SWFMA, Tampa Bay Water, and the county's Environmental Management Department were consulted. No concerns were presented. And lastly, I just want to remind the board, this is a transmittal hearing only. It will come back to us for adoption. If we have concerns, legitimate issues at that time, we can always deny it at that point. So I want to point that out as well. And so I support the motion to transmit.
Okay, and seeing no further discussion at this time, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and we'll have a roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Overman voted no.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to the next item on the agenda, HCCPA 20-17. Planning Commission?
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Commissioners. Once again, Tony Garcia, Planning Commission staff. Larry there, I need to stand a little bit further back. My apologies. Can everyone hear me okay?
No. You could maybe be a little louder.
Can I be a little louder? How's that?
That's better.
Okay, good. Make sure that my mic, my mic is all the way up, so, all right. I will do my best to be as audible as possible for you all this evening. A point of clarification for you, Chairman Kemp, Mr. Horner is for the last item this evening, not this item. So just so that you know, he's for item 2102, which is at the very end.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So without any further ado, I'm going to have HTV pull up my slideshow, because I had some difficulty accessing my particular PowerPoint, so... That is, that one's not mine. That is the applicant's. So mine is the other one. There should be another one that says 2107, also 2117 besides. That's it. That's mine. Nice background. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you for your patience. Before you this evening is the current amendment, before you is HCCPA 20-17. This is on Bloomingdale Avenue and Old Twig Lane. This came to the Planning Commission at our public hearing on April the 12th, 2021, 20... And this was, our original presenter was Will Augustine on this particular slide. Next slide, please. This is located in the central Hillsborough area of Hillsborough County and is also located within the urban service area. Next slide, please. This is a privately initiated map amendment of approximately 27 acres, which means it will only go for transmittal consideration this evening, and will come back to this body in several months after going out for state and region review. I'd like for you all to take a moment to look at the aerial that's being presented to you on this slide, so I can provide you a little bit of context. The slide, the parse, the subject side in question does consist of approximately 11 parcels that have been placed together for the purposes of this particular project. This is located on the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Bloomingdale Avenue and Providence Road. There are a variety of different housing types within this particular area of the Bloomingdale area that consist of townhomes, apartments, single-family detached residential uses, and a variety of general commercial and neighborhood-serving commercial uses which predominantly are located along Bloomingdale Avenue. I would also like to point out to you that west of Providence Road is where one will see most of the more intense types of uses and more of the larger commercial-serving uses that, that, that the patrons of the Greater Bloomingdale and Brandon area go to. West of Gronto Lake Road, which is a little further to the west of the site, as you can see on your aerial, is a Super Target, and there's also to the south of that, on the south side of Bloomingdale, a Home Depot. To the east of the, to the southeast of the site is a Walmart, and to the east of that, on the other side, on the eastern side of Providence Road, is a Community of Winthrop, which also has a Publix as part of its commercial component. Could I have the next slide, please? This is a future land use map that shows all the properties and future land use categories. As one can see, the land use categories immediately proximate to this site consist of Residential Six, which is obvious to the east of Providence Road, and also to the west of Providence Road, you have the predominant land use category of Suburban Mix Use Six. To the west of that, you have the category of Urban Mix Use 60, and to the south of that, Community Mix Use 12. The request is to go to Residential 16. There are, is evidence of Residential 16 proximate to the site, directly to the west of the site, and to the southwest of the site, as depicted on this particular future land use map. Could I have the next slide, please? This slide in particular shows the, what would happen if this particular project was adopted. It has the Residential 16 land use category. The subjects, the, the site to the west of this, which is also Residential 16, was a subject of a plan amendment approximately two years ago, which was found consistent and is very similar in the approach of that. There were several parcels that were accumulated together. There were some parcel assemblies done to result in this particular project being brought forward and was subsequently adopted by, found consistent by the Planning Commission and was adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. Could I have the next slide, please? The impact on this particular site of, this goes from SMU 6 to Residential 16. So your residential potential is 162 dwelling units under the SMU 6 and 433 dwelling units under the Residential 16. The FAR that's being shown here on this particular slide shows 175,000 square feet. For neighborhood, this is for neighborhood commercial uses, but one must also understand under the SMU 6, you also have the potential of a .35 FAR for research corporate park and for office and for other kinds of commercial uses, which allows for the greater potential of a greater amount of square footage. It also allows the potential for light industrial uses under the SMU 6, which also would allow for just approx, approximately 600,000 square feet under the floor area ratio for the light industrial category under the zoning. Could I have the next slide, please? There are a few of, of the slides that show the property. I apologize for this. This has got the wrong, wrong depiction on the bottom as far as where this is particularly located. It's because it talks, well, it talks about Mangereau. There is, there is a church, St. Andrews Church, which is to the south of the site on Bloomingdale, and that's what we need to be looking at. Could I have the next slide, please? So these, these slides basically show the character of the surrounding area. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. And next slide, please. Next slide, please. As far as the agency comments, we did not receive any objections to this particular plan amendment. It was noted that there are wetlands on site by EPC. There are three ponds, retention ponds on the site, and there is also, we did not receive by the school board that there was any excess capacity for the projected residential units for the site. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. As far as consistency review, this is consistent with the future land use element, particularly Goal One, and four objectives and eight policies within the future land use element. It's also consistent with the Brandon Community Plan, Goals One, Two, Six, and Seven. Next slide, please. So the Planning Commission staff found that this plan amendment 2017 was consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies. This was approved by a nine-to-one vote, and has, this recommendation has been moved forward to you for your consideration this evening for transmittal. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions should you have them.
Thank you. And with that is the applicant available. And with that is the applicant available.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Well, we were going to have our three minutes split up amongst our speakers with Ms. Alexis Crespo beginning, followed by Steve Henry, followed by Jane Caldera, and then.
Okay. So if you, I guess I can, this is always an applicant plus a public hearing, but if three, it's three minutes per an applicant representative, so.
Correct. So we were gonna, we were trying to sign up in order of the way we wanted the presentation. So Ms. Crespo with her three minutes, Mr. Henry with his three minutes, Ms. Caldera with her.
Okay, you're recognized. You can start.
Thank you. Good evening, Alexis Crespo with Waldrop Engineering, representing the applicant. We did provide some slides to the Board of County Commissioners to run through this evening. If I could have those pulled up, and if I could have that this time, not count against my three minutes, I would appreciate that. And those slides are our Planning Commission's slides. We did submit slides into the record yesterday that are in abridged version with some updated materials. I can share my screen if that is easier. This is not, this is not the presentation we would like to show. May I share my screen?
Go ahead.
Are we having, are we sorting out these technical issues? There we go, okay.
Thank you very much. Again, for the record, Alexis Crespo, representing the applicant. I want to start by thanking staff. Tony did a great job of explaining the infill, character of the site, its location upon an urban arterial corridor, as well as the mix of uses in this area, which includes upcoming multifamily projects to our west that are at similar densities being proposed, and we're also part of an approved Residential 16 comprehensive plan amendment just very recently. There's also light industrial, commercial within the immediate area, as well as a mix of residential dwelling types. We're gonna focus our presentation on how the proposed amendment is directly consistent with the adopted Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, specifically those goals, objectives, and policies that are directing new growth along transit corridors such as Bloomingdale, where the county is seeking to implement redevelopment that is at higher densities to allow for transit to work in these areas. This is also supportive of your policies to direct new growth and development to your urban service area where adequate public infrastructure exists to support the densities and make use of that investment the county has made. This project is also somewhat special in that it's providing a diversity of housing types, including much-needed affordable housing of the 472 units that would be allowed by the Comprehensive Plan change. 120 of those would be dedicated for affordable housing to those making 80% approximately of the area median income, so an important project in that regard. And this project is proposed in a manner that is very consistent with the Brandon Community Plan, which has been in place since 2010 in the area, and that's, my first slide here shows the property within the urban character or urban general character zone of that adopted community plan. This is specifically where the community noted that urban infill multifamily uses are appropriate based upon relationship to arterial corridors and transit opportunities. And urban general also promotes multifamily up to five stories in the adopted comprehensive plan. Another element of the Comprehensive Plan that the Commission has seen is the ongoing Brandon corridors and mixed-use centers pilot project. Again, this is looking at infill redevelopment opportunities to help make transit work and to allow for.
Your time is up, so I guess you can go to the next speaker. Maybe they can.
Okay. Do you go ahead and go to my slide, Alexis?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023 West Flora, Tampa 33607. I'll be quick. First off, there is existing transit in the area. If you go to the next slide, please. Including an existing bus stop at Bloomingdale and Providence, and then also there are three routes along Bloomingdale that would serve this site. Next slide. What we did is we looked at, as indicated, this site is currently land use SMU 6, and we looked at what could be developed under the SMU 6 versus our proposed project. We looked at four different scenarios. The left side is the AM peak hour. The right side is the PM peak hour. The blue is actually what would be, could be developed from the traffic standpoint under the SMU 6, the orange under the proposed category tonight. So the first one we looked at was a mixed use of multifamily and retail, which is 146 multifamily, 46,000 square feet of retail. And as you can see, our project would be about a 21% decrease in the traffic. The second one was, as Mr. Garcia had indicated, 175,000 square feet of retail. Our project would be about a 9% reduction in the AM peak hour. Then we also looked at the light industrial, about 589,000 square feet. Our project, again, would be about a 65% reduction in the AM peak hour traffic. And finally, we looked at a kind of a reasonable development scenario for the property under SMU 6, would be 143,000 square feet of retail and 28,000 square feet of office. Again, about a 28% reduction. We used those same scenarios in the PM peak hour. The first scenario is a 33% reduction. The retail would be about a 67% reduction. The industrial, ours would be about a 51% reduction. And then the reasonable land uses would be about a 64% reduction. So you can see, in every case, our project is a significant decrease in the amount of traffic that would be generated if it were developed under the SMU 6 category. Next slide, please. What we also did is we looked at Bloomingdale Avenue in this area. We actually did three-day counts out there to look at the existing traffic out there. This has been converted to peak season traffic. And what we've got is the blue represents the eastbound traffic, the orange represents the westbound traffic, and you've got the level of service decapacity shown on the top at 1,800 vehicles. And as you can see, there are two hours of the day in which the eastbound traffic may exceed the adopted level of service. You've got 22 hours of the day in which there is sufficient capacity along this road to be able to accommodate the traffic. One of the things we want to look at always is, if you're trying to encourage the transit ridership, if you continue to improve all the roads to operate acceptable service, you're never gonna get that.
Your time is up. Your time is up.
All right, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. This is Jane Caldera. I'm a professional traffic engineer working for the applicant on this project. I don't have any details to show you today, but I wanted to explain my role, that I'll be working with the applicant to develop a safe traffic and access plan that meets the goals of your Vision Zero initiative. Approximately two years ago, as you heard the county staff say earlier, there was another applicant seeking a similar comprehensive plan amendment in a zoning for a 20-acre site located a few hundred feet to the west. I worked on that project very closely with the County Public Works Department to develop zoning conditions that would improve transportation safety for all modes of transportation. What we'd like to do on this project is the same thing, to have the ability to move forward and work with the County Public Works staff, so we can further the goals of the Vision Zero initiative. Just some ideas on what this could include would be providing improvements along Bloomingdale Avenue that would enhance safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and other modes of transportation. These things could be wider sidewalks, upgraded or new LED street lighting, new or updated transit shelters, and transit amenities. So today, we request that you transmit the CPA application so that we can be afforded the opportunity to work further with the Public Works Department, other key county personnel, and any concerned citizens to develop a PD zoning plan that provides safe mobility for all modes of transportation and advances the goals of the Vision Zero initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Corbett, I guess you're.
Yes. Kami Corbett, again, for the law firm of Hillward and Henderson this evening, representing the applicant. And the applicant is a company called Second Wave Development. They're a Class A multifamily developer, and they did have done all of the legwork. As you heard, there are 11 parcels included in this assemblage to create this opportunity, which is providing a unique and rare opportunity to co-locate both market rate housing and affordable housing. Now, obviously, affordable housing is not an element of this plan amendment before you, but we have filed a companion zoning that proposes 120 affordable housing units, and it is. Those affordable housing units will be developed by Second Wave Development's sister company, who all, you all know, Blue Sky Communities, is a Class A affordable housing developer. And because of the affiliation between these two companies, we have this unique opportunity to locate both market rate and affordable housing on an existing transit corridor with good transit service in an area that is both bikeable and walkable to retail and restaurants. Vacant tracks that are large enough to accommodate both the market rate and the affordable are very hard to come by. Because of the complex financing and land use instructions involved with the housing tax credit program, the property has to be large enough to separate these communities into two distinct parcels of land to allow them to be developed at different times and with different financing mechanisms. As many of you know, affordable housing takes quite some time to finance. Second Wave understands this and is willing to buy this property and give Blue Sky all the time that it needs to secure the necessary housing tax credits to develop the affordable community. As you heard, the long-range planning studies that have been conducted in this area over the last 10 years specifically identify this area as appropriate for increase, an increase in residential density. Through this plan amendment, we are implementing the vision of the Brandon Community Plan to direct urban densities to this location, and the joint goals of the MPO and Planning Commission to increase residential density along the existing transit corridors to support heart. We have findings of consistency from the Planning Commission, both the staff recommending agencies and the Planning Commission itself, and as you heard, from a transportation perspective, our analysis shows that we will, this plan amendment will not increase the amount of trips that could be potentially coming from these 11 properties as we change from SMU to RES 16, and your staff has reviewed that and is in agreement with that conclusion. And with that, I would respectfully request that you transmit this amendment to allow us to take the first step towards making this project a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I think, Mr. Wilson, are you, I guess I could say this is a public hearing, and I don't know if Mr. Wilson was there speaking as part of applicant's team or I guess part of the public hearing?
Public hearing.
Okay. This is a public hearing, and Mr. Wilson, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Sean Wilson, I'm the president of Blue Sky Communities at 5300 West Cypress Street in Tampa. We support this application. When the developer and the attorney first came to us to talk about this property, we thought it really fit all of the definitions of what this county's trying to do in the area of affordable housing. It's on a bus line. It's close to a lot of low-wage jobs. It's also close to the interstate, so that provides good access. And it's an amazing opportunity for the county to capture a little bit of land in a rapidly developing area, where if you don't capture it now, you may never get affordable housing right there. So we think it's good public policy. We think that it's going to fit in well with the neighborhood, and we ask you to transmit this.
Thank you. So that concludes our public hearing, and we'll move to board discussion at this time. And Commissioner White, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to say with respect to the Planning Commission's PowerPoint, let the record reflect that I believe all the photographs were incorrect. They appeared to be of something from a different application. I don't know what happened there, but certainly I would not base any decisions on those photographs. I do have some concerns about this item, namely, as the county has been focusing more and more on our traffic issues, I think we ought to take a close look at communities with a high level of trip generation. If this is transmitted this evening, I would like for staff to provide some information at the adoption hearing. I would like information on maximum traffic impacts with the proposed comp plan designation versus the existing comp plan designation. And I'd also like to know if traffic study models have the impact of the multifamily units that are currently under construction in close proximity to this one, for any and all traffic study models that we may have. I'm gonna go ahead and vote in favor of the transmission, but when we have this back in front of us for adoption, definitely want to talk a little bit about traffic issues.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and I recognize Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, and I have, I share your concerns. Commissioner White, in fact, I'm farther back from you in that I'm not ready to transmit tonight with the data that we've been shown so far. One of the Planning Commissioners, I noted, shared some similar concerns about the traffic study. And, you know, I asked about this at the workshop, so, you know, we telegraphed this. The other RES 16 to the west went to great lengths to show where the direction their trips would go and what would happen there. I'm not seeing that here. What, the questions I have about the traffic study, they do compare the current SMU 6 to the RES 16, but like one of the Planning Commissioners noted, and like Commissioner White noted, it doesn't seem to include the new apartment complexes in the vicinity for the current uses. And I don't think it is comparing what might happen with a density bonus for affordable housing. I love affordable housing. We all know we need affordable housing. This would be a good location in a lot of respects for affordable housing, but if it, but Bloomingdale is a nightmare. The traffic on Bloomingdale is a nightmare, and we do not have any plans to ease that. It's already failing, and even their own traffic analysis show that either way, with the SMU 6 or the RES 16, we're going to be thousands of trips over the capacity of Bloomingdale Road. And if that's not even taking into consideration the density bonus, I mean, back of the napkin, I'm thinking they can get 432 houses at 16 units per 27 acres, but with a density bonus that might bring it up to 472. So that's a lot more trips per day than seems to be considered in the comparison. In the backup, they, the staff quotes a piece of our Comprehensive Plan that says, "According to Hillsborough County's Comprehensive Plan, the county shall plan for and monitor capacity of roadways, regulated roads, to ensure sufficient infrastructure is available to serve expected population and employment growth at adopted level of service." I don't think Bloomingdale is currently at its adopted level of service, but certainly with this, it won't be. And to say that, well, it would be, you know, they've got some calculation that shows it'll be a little less bad than what's already there is not, is not, is not enough for me to pass this. I would like to see our planners provide a little more analysis, given that we're in a pickle whether it's SMU 6 or RES 16. a pickle whether it's SMU6 or RES16. Let's start looking at the big picture. Are we maybe better off with the mixed use, some commercial right there that could capture some trips in the area rather than putting a whole lot more residential? You know, this SMU6 could develop in a myriad of ways. So I just, I'm not ready to say, "Let's trash the SMU6 and go for RES16," on the basis of what we've seen tonight without more detail. But certainly, if it does transmit, I hope that it would come back with a more robust analysis of what this community will be facing with the traffic on Bloomingdale, with the change or without the change, and given the current, the context and the updated information of what we know is coming, and some planning assessment of the form of SMU6 versus a RES16 plus-density-bonus apartment complex, and which would help that area the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be brief. I'm going to support the motion to transmit. I think it's a worthwhile project. I understand the concerns shared by Commissioner White and Commissioner Smith. I'm going to look for the information that Commissioner White requested, and certainly just voting to transmit tonight does not mean that, it's not an indication that I'll necessarily support the adoption, but I think from what I've seen and read, it does warrant at least being transmitted, and we'll see when the information comes back how I vote during the adoption hearing.
I see no other...
Chair?
Yes?
This is Commissioner Overman. May I ask a question or just make some comments? Thank you. You know, I too have always been very, very concerned about the level of traffic that's added to a zoning area because of the density that's added to a road, but this road has already reached the level of where it actually should be listed, and actually, this whole area should be actually considered a TOD zone. It has bus service in the area, but we haven't really designated it as an area that is important to transit and residential. As we heard earlier from the applicant, that many of the jobs in the area would actually service individuals that could live in an affordable housing unit that would not necessarily need two cars because there would be transit in the area. If it were a commitment towards transit in the area, that would address the traffic levels on Bloomingdale Road. And so, you know, we, and these roads, Providence, Bloomingdale, and Gonto Lake Road are Hillsborough County regulated roads, and we have not necessarily looked at each of our areas where we have responsibility for developing those roads and identifying them as transit corridors or transit-oriented development opportunities. I see Bloomingdale as one of those. We're starting to see a significant number of people that are living in the Brandon area, that work in the Brandon area, and while this may be a little ahead of that trend, it would appear that we're going to get the densities in the area, the densities to the west are there, and the only reason it hasn't expanded greatly is because you run into, you know, the interstate or Highway 301, where there's not going to be near as many residents right up on top of that US highway. So I am supportive of this move and will vote to support the transmittal. And I do think that we, as looking at our overall planning, should look at areas like this and really consider how to make sure that the areas are protected for affordable housing and gives our transit agency a commitment to be able to invest in the transit in that area and to design the roads accordingly. We can't seem to get the cart attached to the horse or the horse attached to the cart, and we're running around with the horses and the carts. So I would really like to see us look at TOD zones in the future, but I see this as a potential one, and this is a project that would fit nicely in that kind of scenario. So then, I'll stop there, but I will support the transmit.
Thank you. I see no further Commissioner comments, and I'll just say that this is a hard one for me because, as so many other board members, I definitely want to see more affordable housing, and I want to see it in a place where there would be some transit services in a place where there's density. But I do feel a bit of heartburn about, for Commissioners that haven't been here as long, we've had significant turnouts when it comes to Bloomingdale Avenue, begging us with regards to the gridlock on Bloomingdale and the danger, and we have had deaths on Bloomingdale, you know, and I'm glad to hear a Vision Zero Planner, you know, is involved in looking at that, but we don't have, at this time, plans to look at that street more robustly. We could even designate it as a transit-oriented development zone, but that doesn't bring the transit. We're going to have to have greater resources to ever do more robust transit. And one of the things is, when you try to lessen or try to contain the traffic on a major artery, you have a few options, and one is very robust bus service, which we've not gotten anywhere near there when it comes to Bloomingdale Avenue. I think there's maybe even plans just south of that, it seems to me, to have like a town center and have service there, not that people couldn't reach it from here, but if we look at that. Then your other option to do this is trip capture. Trip capture, as Commissioner Smith was talking about, that's your mixed juice, your SMU6, which doesn't quite put the densities on there, but if we were able to get some of the mixed juice, we could maybe, you know, that could help us with this problem of what is happening on Bloomingdale Road. So I'm going to vote for this tonight, but I'm going to express those very serious concerns because I certainly have been a proponent of densities in the urban service area, but in this SMU6 is a good density. It might be better to be a little more density, but it's a huge leap from SMU6 to SMU or to the 16 in so many ways. And then, as Commissioner Smith said, the density bonus as well. So it does concern me greatly. I'll just express that, and seeing that there's no further discussion, we have a motion by Commissioner White, I believe, and seconded by Commissioner Myers. And with that, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Smith voted no.
And with that, we've completed all of the three resolutions for transmittal. So if we have a motion to send, to approve the resolutions for transmittal, that includes A1HCCPA 2008, as well as A2HCCPA 2103, and A3HCCPA 2017.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Cohen, and a second by Commissioner Hagan, if I heard that correctly. Okay, and with that, any further discussion? So maybe have a roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Smith voted no.
Thank you. And now we will move to the final adoption hearing for the night. That's HCCPA. And if we could have Planning Commission staff introduce this future land use amendment.
Ms. Juwan Haley will be your presenter this evening on this particular item. Thank you.
Juwan Haley, Planning Commission staff. I just want to make sure, can everyone see my screen and hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. I will be presenting the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2102, Orient Road and Evans Brooks Court, the findings and the recommendations for this amendment. So as you can see here, the subject site is located in eastern Hillsborough County. So this is a privately initiated map amendment located on approximately 3.29 acres. It is located within the urban service area, within the limits of the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan. It is located, again, off of Orient Road and at the Evans, the Evans Brooks Court roadway. It is a local roadway. To the north here, you see the intersection of East Chelsea Street and Orient Road. To the south, this is the Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and Orient Road intersection. The Florida Fairgrounds are located further to the northeast. So to provide some context for the adoption, the currently adopted land use categories in the area, so the subject site is outlined here. It's currently Research Corporate Park and Residential 6 on the future land use map. RES6 is located to the north and to the east. Office Commercial 20, OC 20, is located here to the southeast. There is Residential 12 and Residential 9 further south. As you can see, there's the Research Corporate Park further south here, and immediately south, there's also the Research Corporate Park, so quite a bit of RCP around. I do want to take a minute to focus here. This is a somewhat recently adopted amendment area. It went from Research Corporate Park to Light Industrial Plan, which this current amendment that we're discussing this evening is requesting to go to. So it was light, it's been adopted, Light Industrial Plan. It did leave out some RCP to the top, but this is the general adopted land use designations in the general area. So here again, same area, just showing you where, just showing you the new LIP, the proposed LIP designation. So here, this is the front of the subject site. This is facing north. As you can see, there's a white structure to the north. That is the, immediately north of the site, it's the East Chelsea Baptist Church. So here, you can see further north, that is Orient Road, immediately to the east. And so also to the east, you can see, it's predominantly single-family lots here. There is a daycare further down, but it is predominantly single-family. Uses along the roadway, and here's some additional single-family lots here. And now we're facing south, looking at the Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and Orient Road intersection. Immediately south of the subject site, there is a convenience store called The Beverage Castle, but that is located just south of the subject property. So looking at potential impact today, per the adopted land use categories, the maximum density is 80 dwelling units. The maximum intensity is just over 118,000 square feet. So the RCP land use category allows for a floor area ratio of 1. RES6 allows for 175,000 square feet or a .25 FAR, whichever is less. Residential 6 is subject to commercial locational criteria. RCP is not. So looking at the proposed land use category, which is Light Industrial Plan, residential uses are not permitted in LIP, so the potential for that would be zero. The maximum intensity would actually decrease to over 107,000 square feet, and the FAR for LIP is .75. Retail uses are subject to commercial locational criteria in industrial categories. I also want to note here that outdoor storage is a permitted use in Light Industrial Plan, so I just want to make you all aware of that. So Planning Commission staff received no objections from reviewing agencies. So looking at some of the key policies that were reviewed here, of course, all of them are in the staff report, but of course, we want, the comprehensive plan promotes growth within the urban service area. So staff review consistency for Objective 1 and Policy 1.4, the neighborhood protection compatibility policies, looking at gradual transition located off of a collector or an arterial roadway. The request was consistent with that. Here, I want to spend a second on this. This is Objective 26 and 26.7. This is critical because there are obviously some residential in the area. So industrial uses, industrial categories, they must have site planning. They must have a site plan controlled zoning district. So this is very critical and ties back into these neighborhood protection and compatibility For the livable communities element, again, the subject property is located within the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan limits. The community plan does promote economic development, and it was found that a Light Industrial Plan category could promote jobs in the area and provide for economic growth and opportunities. The Planning Commission did find Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan 2102 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the future Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County, and recommended that the B.O.C.C. approve the proposed amendment. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, if we could hear from the applicant, three minutes per each applicant, representative.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, I'm Michael Horner, 14502 North Dale Mary Highway, Tampa 33618, representing the applicant on this matter. I apologize for my typo on the sign-up sheet. I hit 2102 versus 2103. Nonetheless, we have full support, recommendations, no objections from the neighborhood staff and the actual Planning Commission who approved this two weeks ago. My client has a companion major modification PD rezoning in play. Commissioners, we filed this in January with a flex request of the Light Industrial Plan over this site so that we could do the same use we're seeking now. The Planning Commission expressed some objections to that flex, and we therefore put that companion major mod on hold. We filed for this comp plan amendment, and now it will catch up to the major mod in play. I believe our zoning hearing master hearing is May 17. This is a site that is isolated. It is directly next to the Penske Trucking Facility that is 13 acres directly to the west. My client wants to have his trucking business here. There will be no maintenance, no fueling, no repairs, simply storage of truck beds on this site. We will only show those on the south edge of the property. We have to meet all buffering and screening and fencing under the LDC. I would note that the Orient Road parcel, Commissioners, is only going to be in office use, so no industrial storage on Orient. It would be across from those residents to the east. This property's been the subject of a number of vagrant complaints, violations. There've been a number of fires. My client last year ordered up one of the existing houses on this. It's an old structure. The vagrants broke into that house. They hotwired, they stove, started a fire. It was so bad, Commissioners, that TECO refused to come out and disconnect. It was too risky for them, so it's been a difficult year trying to keep this property cleaned up and the vagrants locked out. So, this is a use that we think is good. It will be occupied, it will be maintained, it will be secured, it will be lit. We have a number of supporters on the south side that have indicated their support for this. They're tired of all the problems they've experienced. I also represented Red Cat Plumbing, which owns their facility to the south. They just completed that plumbing facility warehouse where their corporate headquarters and facility distribution headquarters. There is truck storied all along MLK and also south of us along Orient Road to the west. We believe it's an appropriate use. We appreciate staff support. We appreciate the comments that Ms. Haley has offered into the record, and look forward to your support for this CPA. Thank you, board members.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing, but I see that no one has signed up for the public hearing. So at this time, will this move to board discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Myers, move for approval, seconded by...
Second.
Commissioner White and Commissioner Overman.
Sorry, I can't hear the boardroom very well.
I understand, I know. It's doubly endorsed, second. So, and with that saying, no further discussion, can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Was that Commissioner Hagan?
I don't know.
Commissioner Hagan?
Commissioner Hagan, yes.
Oh.
Okay.
Myers?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay. Including the disembodied Commissioner Hagan.
Truly virtual.
Wherever he may be. That transporter really worked. Okay. And with that, we'll adjourn.
Thank you.